Hello, my friends. Welcome back to the Caleb Gordon Podcast. I'm your host, Caleb Gordon. Thank you so much for taking time out of your schedule to be a part of the program today. Super excited for the conversation today. I sit down with Aaron Kirkpatrick. He is running for city council and he is a local pastor. His desire is to help our community become a better place for everybody in Bartlesville. And man, I love the conversation we have and I love the ideas that he's bringing to the table. So I pray that this conversation encourages you, educates you in some areas and helps enlighten you this week. Love y'all. Welcome to the Caleb Gordon Podcast, Mr. Aaron Kirkpatrick.
Thank you. I'm doing well. It's good to be here.
Fantastic. Good to see you. So, okay, you're running for city council right now?
I am.
And tell us a little bit about Aaron. What, what, why did you decide to get into it? But just sort of kind of give us a 30,000 foot view of who Aaron is.
Sure. So I've lived in Bartlesville for 10 years. So I was born in Texas, lived there for-
My dad would have loved you.
Oh, yeah. I was born in Texas, lived there until basically I was almost 11. My family moved to Northwest Arkansas. Dad worked for Walmart corporate. So I did all my growing up years in Northwest Arkansas.
Yes.
I went to college at Harding University in Cersei, Arkansas, which is kind of 45 minutes north of Little Rock. It's where my wife and I met. And then, and I majored in, well, in youth ministry. So I graduated from Harding in 2006 and then took a job in Little Rock. And we lived there for eight years, my wife and I. And then we had, we have four kids. They were all born in Little Rock. So they're all Arkansin. They do wear shoes.
I've got, I've got an aunt and cousins from Arkansas. So I totally-
Yeah. Oh, it's a beautiful state and we loved, I mean, so much about it. My family still lives in Northwest Arkansas. So we go back regularly. So we moved here a decade ago. I came to be the youth minister at the Adams Boulevard Church of Christ.
Okay.
And then a few years into that, our preacher took another job and moved away. And I spent a year doing youth ministry and kind of managing the pulpit. Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a, which is, was a blast and also exhausting.
Yes.
At the end of that nine month search, our elders kind of came and said, hey, why don't you just stay in this role full time? So I stepped into the preaching position and I've been preaching ever since. So that's my, you know, I was gonna say nine to five, but you know as well as I do, ministry is not a nine to five. But it's so life giving. That's, that's what I was created to do, right? Everything else, you know, I've, I'm an entrepreneur. So we've had multiple businesses since we've been in Bartlesville, you know, started, sold, moved on, done different things. But I've always told people like, this business is not my calling. Ministry is my calling. And I'm doing this as an extension of that.
Absolutely. I love that. Yeah. That's great.
So that's, that's kind of how we got here. It's hard to give somebody a 30,000 foot view of yourself, which is of course what everybody asks when you tell them you're running for city council or whatever. Also like, yeah, why, why are you running?
Why are you running?
Exactly. Like, why should I vote for you?
Right.
And since we have time, since it is a long form podcast-
You can do whatever you want.
Then I would say, so I was homeschooled for three and a half years as a kid. My dad would come home every day at lunchtime and he would teach us, my mom taught us the rest of the subjects. He taught us Bible and civics.
Nice.
So, you know, in junior high, early high school, you know, we were reading the Bible every day. We were reading the constitution every day.
Oh, those, those two books. Wait, what?
Yeah, right. It's a, they're a powerful combination. Now, one of them is significantly more important to me, right? One of them, it bases, you know, our whole life is based upon, and the other one, all of our freedoms, rights and responsibilities are based on. So, but, but to read the constitution for itself is a different experience than listening to other people talk about politics and what they think the constitution says, or if they even bring it up at all. So, you know, part of being a follower of Jesus is trying to make a positive impact on the people around you, being a neighbor that, you know, expresses that love. So that, part of that is taking on responsibility. And of course, you know, all of us have watched over the last, so I'm 40, over, so I was doing those classes at like 12 ish, right? 12, 12, 13 years old. So let's call it over the last 30 years. Because that was when I started paying attention to government, to politics. So over the last 30 years, we've seen such massive changes. And, and the federal government kind of sucks all the oxygen out of the room. We can talk about that in a minute. But as we've watched all these changes happen, you know, as my own children have grown up, you know, it's, it's one thing to sit around and we, you know, you can't have a conversation about politics with anybody without people complaining about a host of things. And, and it's really not always complaining about who's in office, who's the president, who's the senator? Like sometimes it's that, but most of the time it's really just the quality change. And the quality change of our lives have come, not because of who's in office, but because of the changes and restrictions in our freedoms and our liberties that we've seen.
Yes.
And the cultural changes that have come along with that. So I remember having a teenager in Little Rock and she was doing an essay and she, and the essay was, she was supposed to interview three people who had lived through nine 11. And she, she called me to be one of those three people and said, you know, how is life different now than it was back then? Before nine 11, which of course we just, you know, we just celebrated that remembrance yesterday.
Yes.
And I told her, I said, you cannot imagine how different the country is now than it was, you know, September 10th, 2001.
Yes.
The, the change in, I mean, it's like, if you've lived through it, you know, it's a change in everything, right? And so that's the, like, so we complain, but we don't complain just about the people. It's really like, why is there, why is there no consequence for people who are obviously corrupt?
Right.
Why can, why can our politicians and the media lie to our faces? Everybody knows they're lying and yet they're never held to account by the law, by their own followers, by the other side. Why can people just make money that is clearly grifting the system? Why have all of our sense-making organizations been captured so obviously? Like all of this, we can see with our own eyes and what we get told every time we turn on the TV or every time we hear from a politician is, that's not real. Right? So it's, so we, we have been told over and over again, deny what you can clearly see.
Yes.
And believe some narrative instead. And there's never a consequence. So I found myself with my kids talking about this over and over again. And, and I, and with friends too, saying like, you know, well, why don't you vote for so and so? Why don't you vote about this? And this is the one issue. And I kept saying, it's more than one issue. It's the whole thing. The system has changed in a way that isn't constitutional, is a way that's breaking my heart and it's making the country that, like, my kids cannot recognize, they would not recognize 1998.
No.
For the way that the culture works now and the country works. And finally, what I heard, I had this, this growing sense within me as someone who, you know, follows Jesus and loves the constitution of, okay, you can only complain so long before you have responsibility.
Yes.
And at the same time, I kept saying these kinds of conversations to people, saying like, you know, there is a way to fix all of this. But the way to fix all of this is for men and women of character and integrity.
Absolutely.
And I don't even care what side of the political spectrum necessarily. If you have character and integrity, you will have difference of opinions. That's why freedom of speech exists so that we can wrestle with our ideas. But without people of integrity stepping into these places of responsibility and servant leadership, nothing will ever change.
Absolutely.
And so I kept having people go, well, if someone like you ran, I'd vote for you, but there's nobody like that. So I gotta vote for so and so. And after hearing that enough times, and again, talking to my kids about the way the country is supposed to work, I finally said, okay, not, I'm not gonna be grandiose. I'm saying God is telling me I need to do this. God has already told me what to do. It's follow the way of Jesus and the world around me. So finally, at some point you say, where, where leaders, where responsibility has been abdicated.
Yes.
Opportunity exists. It's a Jordan Peterson line.
Yes.
And then we can look at the country all around us and say, all of these people have abandoned their responsibility and they are just now stealing from the, from the Americans, whether it be your rights, your money, your taxes, your, you know, whatever it is. They are grifting. They've abandoned their responsibility, which means there's an opportunity for men and women of character to step up and say, if I take the responsibility, will you give me the freedom to lead?
Yes.
Which is, that's why I'm running for city council.
That's wonderful. You, you, man, I'm not in word for, obviously, but if I was, a hundred percent would be voting for you. So this is fantastic. So, okay, I want to talk about a couple of different things. I've seen, I've watched your ads. That's, that's initially how I saw it. I saw the initial kickoff ad because of what happened Monday with the drag show, which I just find, that, that was my biggest thing whenever it happened. I said, I'm not against people doing certain things in, there's, there's a time and a place for everything, right? So constitution, freedom of speech, all these fine things that everybody likes to throw.
Right.
But here's my dilemma. We don't allow certain things in the public square. Because it's not decent, because it's not, it's not right. And the, when this thing happened a couple of years ago, I said, just go inside. Go inside and make it for adults. That was like the simple, you know, question or the statement that I, I made. And I was just, you're, you hate all, all the LGBTV. No, I don't.
Right.
I was like, I just don't want my kids to have to see grown men wearing weird clothes.
Right. Well, so it's worth knowing, I try to be precise in my language when it comes to any issue that we're talking about, because language is how things get twisted and it shapes the conversation you can have. So one thing is worth noticing is that anytime someone starts calling names.
Yes.
It means that they have lost the argument. And so we're no longer dealing with the logical side of the brain. We're dealing with the emotional side of the brain.
Yes.
And so when, when, you know, when you say, this is my opinion and you get called whatever, you know, the, the it, the phobe, the, you know, whatever. And, and it's also, it's not just one side. Like this is true across the board. If you're having a discussion, a disagreement with somebody, same thing in your marriage. If it stops from talking about the issue that you're wrestling with, that you're having conflict over and goes to calling your spouse names, it's the, number one, you're no longer even having a productive conversation. And number two, you're saying, I can no longer defend my position, therefore I must attack you personally, right? So you can tell you're tapping into something real when people start calling names. It's, there is no argument there. It's just the fastest way to shut somebody up. And, and so I refuse to, I like to be very technical.
Love that.
And keep it on topic. It's, it's also, it's understandable why people get emotional over this on, on both sides. So, so I appreciated, I appreciated the perspective of, hey, why don't we just move this inside? And the challenge is, and it's a good challenge to have. I mean, the first amendment, it protects speech.
Yes.
Right? And it protects speech you disagree with. That's, it's important for every single one of us to, to remember that if you want to be able to express the view that you hold passionately, that is unpopular, that is, that may even be incorrect, right? I've read my lessons from 10 or 15 years ago, right? Like, I'm, thank God I had the right to be wrong later and to go, oh, you know, I kind of missed that. So like, all of our opinions change if you're a thinking person. So it is, it is fair for, for people you disagree with to have the right to express themselves together. We're so thankful that that's enshrined in the constitution. So that has to be fair also for the people we disagree with, right? In this case, you know, we're talking about a drag show. So the challenge here, you said, you said something that I've heard now over and over again. It's actually how the city council thought that they could regulate all this was with decency laws.
Yes.
Okay. The problem is that decency is subjective.
Sure.
It's like modesty, right? We can look at the same thing and have differing opinions on what is or is not modest, is or is not acceptable, is or is not good, is or is not decent.
Right.
So, so what happens when we have these conversations is people end up, the argument breaks down because one side says, that's indecent. That's wrong. That's bad. That's sin. That's, we use these kinds of language. And the other side says, this is good. This is acceptable. This is something that should be celebrated. And what we're making are value statements that are inherently subjective. So the law gives us some amount of, of ability to regulate behavior based on an objective standard, right? That's what the law is. The law is an objective standard to apply to situations across the board.
Yes.
But when you use words like decency, unless you're being extremely technical with a legal definition, it is just subjective argument. And so you can look at this thing and say, bad. They can look at this thing and say, good. And, and then it's a fair argument. I saw this a lot on the, the, an article, the Examiner Enterprise posted yesterday, hundreds of comments. And it was basically like, if you don't like this, why don't you just go away, not go? And if you don't like the, or, you know, this is wrong and sinful and bad and gross and, you know, why are you forcing this? So we've gotten into a gridlock. And so anytime that, that local municipalities or the states have tried to regulate this because it's been about decency or morality of some kind, or what we just don't want, some kind of community standards, since it's that way, you lose the argument on appeal. You lose, the law gets overturned because the courts rightly say, just because you think it's indecent or gross or bad or immoral, you don't have the right to stop somebody else from saying that. And we're thankful that's the case. So my argument, I was an umpire for 12 years. So rulebooks, very familiar with them and understanding why rulebooks exist are helpful.
Where were you two years ago, bro? This is, I'm not, I'm not just like, this is, I'm, I'm loving what you're saying. So go ahead. Yeah. I'm sorry.
Okay. No, no, that's, so, let's see, where was I? Well, the rulebooks. So rulebooks exist for a couple of reasons. Number one, it is, it is to make sure that we're all playing the same game.
Yes.
Right? If, if we get on the softball field together, I love softball, play every chance I can. So if we get on the softball field together over at our tune off and you, you know, you pitch me the ball and then I tackle you.
That's, that's a problem.
Right. We're not playing the same game, right? So, so rules exist to, number one, to define the game you're playing. And the second reason that rulebooks exist is to make sure that the playing field is level for everyone, right? That everyone is protected so that no one team can manipulate the game, the field, the rules in such a way that they get an unfair advantage because you want everybody to be able to succeed based on their own merits.
Yes.
Their teamwork, their cooperation, their individual skill. Okay? So the law is the exact same way, or supposed to be the same way. Part of the mess we're in is that it has not been applied that way. You know, it applies to some and not to others. Looking at the first amendment, that's what we want, a level playing field. But part of what we have said over time and in law and the courts, all the way to the Supreme Court have backed this up, that, that there are some outcomes that matter. You can't yell fire in a crowded theater, right? If you do that, you're on the hook. If there's no fire, if people get hurt, right? Because the health outcomes that happen to the group actually supersede your right to be allowed to yell fire in a crowded room, right? And, and we largely agree that that is wise. So when we, when it's come to this specific issue, that what the courts have said is that drag shows are a form of protected speech. Fair enough. Okay. They are speech. Rather than trying to, right, rather than trying to make them allowed or disallowed, whatever, regulating them, rather than trying to regulate them on some kind of a subjective standard of decency. My perspective has been that of an official. We need to look at the outcomes and do the outcomes necessitate regulating them in a different way? If you're offended, I don't care. I'm offended. I don't care, right? That's their right to offend me. My right to offend them back. But what the government has shown over and over again is that especially when it comes to the public health of children, the government has the right and responsibility to step in and regulate. So this was my, it is a novel legal framework. I'm not, if someone else in America has come up with this and said it publicly, I've not seen it. I know I'm the only person around here who's ever said this out loud because I, I sat down with our city attorney and said, what do you think about this? And he said, you caught me flat footed. I've never heard anybody talk about it like this. My perspective is that, that we can draw a direct line between exposing young people to body dysphoria, which is the psychological, you know, technical psychological word for what we'd end up calling transgenderism.
Yes.
Exposing children to that at young ages and repeatedly is directly linked to higher cases of body dysphoria among teenagers, especially in children. Okay. So adolescents and minors. So if you get exposed to it, you're more likely to experience it. And that is directly linked to long-term negative health outcomes. Okay? Here's a piece of, here's a data point that everybody needs to know. Two generations ago, 0.3% of the entire population of America identified as trans or non-binary. Okay. That's exceedingly small.
Yes.
In two generations now, it's closer to 5%. That is a 1,500% increase. Okay. So let's imagine where this is ranchland. Okay? Let's imagine that you and I, that your family has owned a farm.
Yes.
Okay. For five generations, you've been raising cattle on these, on this ranch land forever, right? Every year, you know, they have babies, you know, you sell some, you slaughter some, you breed some, and you just do the whole cattle business. You've been in the cattle business for five generations. And then all of a sudden, all at once, you have 5% of your cows start being born with a fifth leg.
We've got, we've got a problem. There's something wrong somewhere.
Any sane person would go, there must be something in the environment that has changed, right? Now that could be, you know, maybe there's just a natural genetic mutation. Maybe there's some kind of external pressure that is given, you know, a genet, an adaptive advantage to a fifth leg, but probably there's something in the pesticides, something in the drugs that we're giving them, something in the feed that we're giving them. You would naturally look and say, what has changed in their environment that's caused this? On any ranch, any farm in the world, this is the, the only thing that makes sense. All of a sudden our cows are being born with a fifth leg and that has never happened before. This is, this is weird. So imagine then, you know, you go to the auction with your five, with your five-legged cows. And everybody starts going, whoa, 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 whoa. Don't breed those cows with our cattle. We don't know what this is. Now, maybe this is fine. Maybe it's actually an advantage to have a fifth leg, but all we know is no cows ever have had a fifth leg. And all of a sudden, a ton of your herd does. Don't put that in the food supply yet. Don't breed that with the other cattle yet. We need to go to your ranch and figure out why your ranch is the only ranch this is happening on. So what we're seeing is if transgenderism, if body dysphoria was a natural thing that was, that would naturally grow rapidly.
Yes.
You'd see it across the board, but what you see is it's zip code specific. The more, the more liberal a zip code is, the more likely they're to have more kids who are trans. So it's your ranch is having this issue. My ranch is not. That tells you it's not something that is a naturally occurring phenomenon. It is actually, it is most likely to be environmental in some way. The research is in exposure matters. Okay? But let's take, let's go back to the auction. We're going, hey, hey, we need to be careful with this, right? You go, well, how dare you be a bigot and judge my cows? Well, I'm not saying anything's necessarily wrong with your cow. I'm just saying we should be really cautious when all of a something, something brand new explodes onto the scene. And you go, if you don't let me put these cows on your ranch, you're a bad person.
That would, that, that defies logic.
Yeah.
All levels of logic.
It's, it's insanity, right? Now, now, again, I'm not saying that every single trans person's insane. I'm not saying they don't have a right to express all this. What I'm saying is if you go from a 1,500% increase in something was exceedingly rare, to now everybody is seeing this in our kids, we, we should not be doing is going, oh, let's just embrace this. This is clearly now the next best thing. What we should be saying is there's something different in the environment. And until we isolate that, this is a problem, especially, just add one more bit to the metaphor. That fifth leg turns out to be cancerous in a high percentage of the cattle.
We've got a problem.
We have a real problem.
Real problem.
And what we know now is because we've got lots of research on this, because we have just run the largest experiment on children that I'm aware of, right? A non-consensual experiment on kids. And what we're seeing is that there are real negative health effects to people who struggle with body dysphoria. Now, I want to be clear because I, again, I try to be very precise. It is true in the research, not every single person who is trans has a problem with it or suffers as a result. Some people go all the way through the surgeries and actually report they are much happier on the other side of it. So give credit where it's due. There are some people, this seems to help, whether you or I like it, doesn't matter. Like the research is clear on this. There are some people, but those people tend to start showing with these body dysphoria issues before they're four years old. So there are some people who, for whatever reason, really struggle with this from childhood. That's normal. Psychologists have been seeing this for as long as they've been tracking psychology. What's unusual is for, is for it to just come on when you're 13, 14, 15, 16 years old. That's for a nine-year-old to be talking about their gender identity. That's brand new.
Yeah. At nine years old, I wasn't doing that. I, I mean, my, my kids weren't doing that. I've got three grown adult kids and they didn't do that. Like it was, they didn't come home saying, hey daddy, I'm a girl and I'm, or I'm a boy. They didn't do that. They were like, can I go jump on the trampoline?
Right.
Yeah. And I think, I think one of the things that, that brings this more into the world is because we, it's, what we, what we watch is what we're gonna, okay, what we're gonna start to be normal, or we're gonna normalize what we watch, right? And so we, we, we watch these screens all day long that have stories of whatever. And I think that that conditions us to some level as well.
Right.
That's just, that's just-
Well, the research-
Another thing to throw into the pot.
So I spent, because, so I worked with teenagers for 13 years. So my, my minor was in psychology and I spent a lot of time constantly studying adolescent psychological development. That was, you know, that, because I was dealing with this kind of stuff, you know, I was dealing with their, their issues all the time. So I tried to stay on top of whatever research was coming out for as long as I was, for as long as I was in youth ministry. So just from, from a psychological perspective, from a psychological adolescent development perspective, kids are asexual until they hit puberty, unless, unless they have been abused.
Yeah.
Like you can tell, if you have a child who is hypersexual, you can tell that child has been mistreated by somebody. It is a dead set, like your radar should go off. You should go, whoa, hold on, something's going wrong here. I need to be, I need to be watching their interactions with other people because somebody has very likely made them unsafe.
Yeah.
The fact that we now have a whole generation where they are talking about sexuality and identity. The fact that my, my kids are going to school with fourth and fifth graders who are identifying as bisexual or gay or trans. What that tells me is that they have been exposed in some way that is very detrimental. You're not supposed to be exposed to sexuality when you're that young, not because, oh, we're a prude and we don't, you know, what, you know, whatever. These Christians are prudes and they don't want to talk about sex. It is not that. It is that they are asexual creatures and there is a natural progression in human development where you become sexual. That is meant to happen at a time for a purpose. And when we jumpstart that process, we do incredible damage. I mean, how many people do you know that have been mistreated sexually like that, who, who, they struggle with that for so long. It's hurtful to them.
Yes.
But we have now made it a cultural norm to do that to our kids. This is, it's horrific what we have done.
Yes.
Now, we cannot fix the entire culture, right? That's not, that's not the goal. The goal is not to go, how do we change things from the top down? In reality, the most important changes should come in a republic from the bottom up.
Yes.
So my suggestion to the city council is to stop having arguments based on decency, morality, or other subjective perspectives. And instead, look at the outcomes and regulate backwards.
Yes.
So we've done this before with smoking. And, and body dysphoria is exactly like smoking. The earlier and more regularly you are exposed to people doing it in a way that looks positive, the more likely you are to pick up smoking yourself.
Yes.
And the earlier you start smoking, the more likely there are to be negative health outcomes down the line. It's exactly the same. And the, and the government has, all the way through the Supreme Court have decided over and over again, you are allowed to regulate that kind of speech when it has to do with the public health outcomes of minors. And so my, my push, my desire, what I will try to do on the city council is to direct Jess Kane, the city attorney, to look into this novel legal approach. Can we regulate this based on smoking standards, based on the health outcomes we can see in the research that it has that are negative for these kids? And we don't say you're not allowed to be trans, to have a drag show. You can do all that. You have freedom of speech. One of the, one of the legal precedents that you're, that the government must follow when it regulates speech. It must do it with the lightest possible touch. So you're not allowed to come in and say, no one's ever allowed to mention smoking again because it hurts kids. What the government can do is say, you can't have a cigarette billboard, cigarette advertisement, a thousand feet from a school. So with the lightest possible touch, they say, we're not, you're not allowed to advertise it on TV during hours when the kids are gonna watch.
Sure.
So it is within the city's rights, as I understand them, to say, we have a vested interest in the health of our children. And we need to remove, as best we can, early access to, or, or early showings of body dysphoria in places where it's celebrated. So it gets to the exact same end that you had two years ago. Just move it indoors, right? But there's the difference between, hey, let's negotiate and move it indoors. The city council tried to negotiate again this year. Two years ago, the pride group did negotiate with the city and said, okay, we'll only do it indoors. And then they didn't do a drag show at the community center.
Yeah.
Isn't it strange that once that agreement ran out, this time the new group said, we're doing it outside and we're not negotiating.
And they're not negotiating. They brought, they've got like a dozen drag queens that they're bringing to this thing. It's just insane.
Whether it is one or a dozen, the children who are exposed is, is have a risk of having really severe negative health outcomes as a result. Now, I think it's important that we build our policy off of first principles and first principles that fit well within our culture. So one of the things that I love about Oklahoma is that whether or not you are liberal or conservative, we are all fairly libertarian.
Yes.
Because this is a bootstrapping kind of state, right? Run in, find a piece of land.
You do your thing. I'll do mine.
Exactly. Like you are welcome to do whatever you want with your own body, as long as it isn't, as long as you take responsibility for it, right? Like, I don't care what you do. Like, if you wanna, in any realm, right? If you want to mutilate your own body, you said, hey, I'm gonna chop my arm off. I'd be like, Caleb, you really probably shouldn't do that. Yeah, let's, you're, you're gonna regret that. But if you, I'm doing it. You can't stop me. You know what? You're right. But I don't want to talk about it and I don't want to pay for it. As long as you deal with the consequences, I don't care because you're an adult.
Yeah.
So I want to build on those liberty, those principles of liberty from the ground up, right? I'm not trying to restrict the people's right to, you know, for men to dress like women and, and perform. I'm not trying to, to restrict the right for people to go and cheer them on. We all have the right to do that.
Yes, yes.
So with the lightest possible touch, move it indoors. There are some people, and this is where, this is where I will probably run into disagreement, maybe with you, I don't know. But another core principle or core foundational, like first principle for Oklahoma is parental rights. So, you know, I love that we just passed this, you know, the school choice, you know, ability to choose the school your kids go to, to use the tax money to do that. I think it's very wise to let parents take more control over their children's education. I support things like that.
I do too.
But if I agree with that, then I must also agree with someone who raises their kids in a way I disagree with.
I, listen, I, no, I'm with you. There's, I'm not the, it takes a village guy. Those are my kids. Those are your kids. And if you're teaching your kids things that I don't, that I don't agree with, those are your kids. Right. I may be teaching my kids things that you don't like.
Right.
And that's, as long as you're not harming them. Yeah, cool.
Right. So if you want to, if we, so I would propose the city, the city require these events to be held indoors.
Yes.
Even in public places, you're welcome to use public infrastructure, you know, public buildings, public venues, but it must be indoors so that kids who are passing by unknowingly, unwittingly are not exposed to public displays of body dysphoria where it's being celebrated. But if you as a parent want to take your children to celebrate that, you're welcome to do so. You have the parental right to do so in the same way that you can smoke with your kids in the car.
The last time I had, I had Trevor on here last week, I told him, I said, if you want to, as a parent, want to take your kids to do something like that, that's between you and the Lord. I got no, I got no things there.
Well, it's gonna be interesting. Well, it's gonna be interesting, we can talk about it being between you and the Lord. The more immediate consequence for most people is it's between them and their kids.
Fair enough, yes.
And the reality is that rapid onset gender dysphoria, you should expect on the other side, you should have a hypothesis that on the other side of rapid onset gender dysphoria will be what is, what now called detransitioning. But, so when you work with teenagers, you see these phases in these fads, right? So, I mean, when I was a youth pastor, it was a lot of, um, um, cutting,
Yeah.
anorexia, bulimia. And so instead of, uh, is, is, what would happen is like, you know, one girl would be, would admit she had anorexia and suddenly three or four of her friend group would start struggling with it as well. It was a contagious mental illness.
Yes.
Body dysphoria is, as well, is a contagious mental illness. Nobody in their right minds would have told those girls, you know what? You identify as fat.
Right.
So we're, we're going to celebrate what you are doing to change your body so that you don't feel fat anymore.
Yes.
That, that's insanity. Um, in fact, um, we did interventions more than once to help kids who were going through this, because they were self-harming in a way that like, sometimes ended up with them in the hot, we did interventions like, we found out and went, man, we gotta intervene in this so they don't die.
Yes.
What's gonna happen is, these parents have been ideologically captured. They think this is a great thing.
Right.
And they have the right to, they have the right to believe that. They have the right to be wrong. They can think this is a great thing, but you're going to expose your kids to it. You're going to celebrate when they begin doing this thing. And then about the time they hit twenty-five and their brains finish changing, they're gonna look back and go, I, why did I do these things? And for some of them, they will have been pushed to hormone blockers, which are not reversible like we've been told, especially not to the degree we were told. And they will have undergone surgeries that are not reversible, and they will have lifelong complications as a result. And so we can talk all we want about, it's between you and God, but in reality, those, those kids who are now young adults are gonna turn around and go, you did this to me.
Yeah.
In the face of all, and they're gonna do this to doctors too. Maybe the thing that will change this the fastest is when people begin suing their doctors, begin suing their parents for long-term harm that has been done. And as, as a Christian, as a Christian, we tend to do one of two things. I think about this a lot as a pastor.
Yes.
Pastors tend to, or depending on the type of church you're at, the more, let's call them conservative side of Christianity. It's like we are standing at the back of a group of people running towards a cliff and it's like we are pulling on the leash, saying, stop, stop, stop. Come back here, go this way. It was better here. We're like pulling backwards, but the herd is running, right? The group is running towards the cliff. The more liberal side of Christianity actually runs along with them, right? Flying the flags and celebrating the people. And we just got, we're supposed to love everybody without questioning what love means. And neither side is ever effective, because you cannot stop the herd that's plunging towards the cliff. And running with them just gets them there faster. In reality, what Jesus shows us is not that you're supposed to try to stop the movement or you're supposed to run along with the movement. It is that the world is always plunging towards the cliff.
Yes.
And Christians are meant to be catching people on the way down, saying, we ran down to the bottom of the cliff to keep you from hitting the ground. We saw the cliff. Understanding, understanding the scripture, understanding human nature gives us clarity to see where this thing's going. So that we can catch you on the way down so that you don't hit rock bottom.
Don't go this way.
Exactly. So we're not gonna stop it.
Sure.
But there are ways to see where it's going. And our goal is to be there to support people and say, we kept you from hitting the ground. That's what I'm trying to do right here. I am trying to put some kind of a policy that is legally defensible in place that protects the kids, because this whole thing's going over a cliff. There's a lot of people whose lives will be irrevocably changed for the worse.
Yes.
But if we can at least staunch the bleeding, stem the tide so that the children are protected. Here's why, every single, every single person who is really in support of these drag shows and just support of transgenderism in general, every single person who, uh, uh, who believes in that ought to be deeply afraid of what I am proposing. Because what I am proposing, if it is backed up in the court, if we can pass this thing on, on health outcomes, the city would still get sued. But in court, they would have to argue rapid onset gender dysphoria, the research, and the health outcomes. And that should terrify everybody who thinks this is a good thing, who's in support of, of all of this rapid rise in transgenderism. Because if we can get the, if the courts will say, you know what, looking at all this evidence, transgenderism is like smoking, suddenly, every state can regulate it, just like smoking. And it stops being on, yeah, Unity Square, but it stops being allowed in schools, it stops being allowed in libraries, it stops being allowed anywhere children congregate.
That's fantastic. I love that idea.
This to me is, this is the idea that has the most legs to really change the direction that we are going and to catch these kids before they go off the cliff.
Come on, that's great. I love it. Wow. That's, I remember you two years ago, bro.
Well, okay, so, so actually, let's talk about that for a second. Two years ago, Billy Roan was our representative in Ward Four. And I thought, I, I, I met Billy a couple of times, got to talk to her for a couple of hours. I really, really liked her. And she really had this great heart for, for all of our ward, for, for all of our people. Um, and, and we face way more issues than just this. This is a hot button topic, but there are lots of things, lots of opportunities and lots of challenges that face Bartlesville and Ward Four specifically. So I had no desire to run against Billy Roan, because I, I really respected her and admired her and thought she did a good job. And replacing, replacing somebody who was already doing a good job is not something I wanted to do. My perspective as both, uh, I mean, you know, I'm a pastor, I get to minister to hundreds of people. Um, I also have, I've had multiple businesses over the years, sometimes at the same time. My perspective has always been, do what you can do best and do what only you can do best, right? And then let other people do what they can do best. So if I got somebody like Billy sitting in that seat, who's passionate about things, who on this specific topic also agreed with, uh, maybe not my overarching legal thesis, but the idea. She voted to, to regulate it, try to keep it off Unity Square, try to keep the kids away from it, basically.
Sure.
So if she's gonna do a good job there, I can focus my attention, my talents somewhere else.
Sure.
She passed away unexpectedly this, this spring, and so that seat became available. I had been thinking about city council for actually eight years.
Yes.
Um, the time had not been right. And so finally, this was the moment to say, we can't afford to lose this for the sake of our children. But also, there's a ton of opportunities for Bartlesville that, what I'm actually really good at is seeing opportunities where other people see complexity or challenges and strategically planning a route through it.
That was the next thing I wanted to talk about, because you posted another video.
Yeah.
About some vacant lots. And I, which I, when you, when I heard this, it was like, this was a, this is a great idea. I got, I love it. So share your idea about this, that you, you announced this.
Yeah.
Actually Tuesday, so.
Right. So it's called the Hometown Heroes Land Run.
Yes.
So, uh, let me, I'll explain the opportunity and then, um, and then we'll get to the, the actually what happened. So the opportunity is this, the state passed a law this year, uh, that allowed, um, that allowed the city to take possession of vacant properties that were, that had, that were tax delinquent. So, um, if you stop paying the property taxes on your beautiful home.
Yes.
Uh, the county will, you know, you'll have back taxes. The county will come after you, so you gotta pay these taxes. If you just refuse to do so, then eventually you'll lose the house to the county. And I mean, I have mixed feelings about that in general.
Sure.
But what we're talking about is dilapidated properties. Typically, they were probably owned by somebody who was renting it out. You know, had not taken care of the property forever. They had tenants who were living in squalor. Eventually, it became abandoned. Then you've got this structure and, and when you have abandoned structures like that, at least all kinds of negative outcomes for the neighborhood. So the county took possession of it, but because it was in city limits, that gave, that, that gave the responsibility to Bartlesville to maintain those properties, knock down the buildings, mow the lawn regularly to keep the neighborhood from, you know, from getting dragged down by the state in property. But that, that costs the taxpayer dollars.
Hundred percent, yes.
So this year, the, the state said, okay, cities can actually take possession of those properties, because the county in the past would just basically auction them off. And they'd keep the money. Now the city can do that. So the city took possession of about a dozen properties in August. And, and this number will always go up. There'll always be more properties like this, because people stopped paying their taxes. So the idea was, if the cities take, take ownership, then they can choose to do something with them. They, and so I went to the city planner Larry and I went to, um, Mike, the city manager and, uh, and, and just said, hey, what are we gonna do with these? Um, as I said, Micah, Mike, Mike Bailey, Micah is the engineer. Anyway. So I went to Mike, I went to Larry, I said, what are we gonna do with these properties? And they said, well, we don't know yet. In fact, the city council even said, we don't know what to do with them yet. Let's go ahead and take them, then we can figure it out. And their basic idea was, well, either we'll, maybe we auction them off for pennies on the dollar. Or maybe we bundle them and sell them to a developer and have them develop all at once.
Yeah.
Okay, not a bad idea.
Sure.
Not a great idea. I'm a big fan of great ideas.
Yes.
So I was asleep. I woke up from a dead sleep at five thirty in the morning, okay? I'm on my pillow and I sit up and I'm like, oh my gosh, I've got it. I've got a great idea. I know what to do with these properties. And, and so the, the idea was born, the Hometown Hero Land Run. My idea is, we don't sell these properties. We give them away to, to, uh, uh, in kind of a, you can call it a lottery. I've been calling it a raffle. It's just two words for the same thing. The idea is, so we have these people that we really want to keep for the health of the community. Our teachers, our police officers, our firefighters. We need these people. And they regularly get pulled away to either larger municipalities or other states that pay more.
Yes.
So we need these people. We love and support these people, but we can't, as the size town we are, support them at a higher level, especially without jacking up everybody's taxes, which very few of us want. So we have these properties. My thought is, let's give them away to people who will develop them. Now, if I'm a teacher, a firefighter, a police officer, I want to develop these properties for one of two reasons. Either I want to build it and live in it, or I want to build it and sell it for a profit, just like a real estate developer does, and then I get a nice big bonus.
Yes.
So, um, my idea is, we give everybody one entry based on the years of service they've done for Bartlesville. So if you've been a teacher, you know, in Bartlesville for twenty years, twenty entries. Firefighter for ten, ten. Brand new to the police force, one entry, okay? Ninety days before we give these properties away, before we do the, the raffle, we, we publicize to those three groups and say, um, here are the property addresses. You can, so that they can go look at them and decide, man, I'd really like to build a house on this property. Either to live there or to sell, but I wanna, I wanna build a house here. That also gives you time to work with local lenders. And by the way, I'm meeting today at eleven fifteen with a, with a manager at a local lender to try to, uh, my goal is to streamline with our local lending folks this process so that when, when you want a property, you can go to them and say, I wanna participate in the Hometown Hero Land Run. They go, we understand the whole process. We can streamline the, the, the financing for you. And to partner on the backend with local developers and contractors who, you know, if you're a GC, you make about thirty percent general contractors. Make about thirty percent on the overall, overall build. Would you cut that down by ten percent? Just to save them a little money? But also in doing so, we will funnel business to you. We'll funnel these people to you.
Advertise for you.
And have four or five builds that are pretty standard, that people can customize, so that when they say, I wanna do this, you can say, here's how much it costs. The lender can say, we know how much it costs. Let's, let us help you get the funding set up. So that you can then go to the city and say, I want to enter the raffle. Here's my plan for development. Here's the, the evidence that I have secure funding, because once you win that property, you'll have one year to begin construction.
Yes.
That means we don't have vacant lots anymore.
That's fantastic.
Now, for the quality of the neighborhood, it is important to me that these do not become immediate rental units.
Right.
In the west side of town, Ward Four, where I live, we have an incredibly high density of rentals.
Yes.
Some people do a great job of keeping up, you know, their rent, their rental properties. A lot of it is just slum lords.
Yeah.
Not everybody, but too much, where you'll let the house dilapidate. And that's not good for this, for our neighbors who live there. They, they're paying money to live in squalor, because the person doesn't wanna replace the roof for the water heater, the hole in the floor, whatever. That to me is unacceptable.
I agree.
So a way to increase the value of the neighborhoods and actually incentivize other investment is to say, these houses that we build through the Hometown Hero Land Run must be owner occupied.
Yes.
For ten years. So you, as the person who builds it, can build it, live in it, or you can sell it, but those people who buy it will have to live in it.
Yes.
That means we have people who are invested in the life of that neighborhood.
Fantastic.
When you have a police officer or a firefighter move onto the block, the entire neighborhood gets safer.
Come on.
When you have a teacher move into the block, he or she is gonna develop relationships with the neighbors and the children around them. So your outcomes at school are gonna be better.
Yes.
You have another, like, they are a part of the support system, the human infrastructure of our community. So incentivizing them to live there is great. One other really cool part of this, actually two, I gotta remember both of them. I keep forgetting the second one, so maybe you get to hear it for the first time.
Alright.
So one, one cool part of this is most of, or a lot of downtown is already zoned multifamily residential. That means that you can build your primary residence and live in it, but you can build an outbuilding that is a rental. So an above garage apartment or a couple of tiny homes, but you can then, as long as you're living in the main structure or the owner occupant is, you can rent out the other structure. That means that they can help you pay for the cost of development, pay for your mortgage. And we have an affordable housing crisis in Bartlesville right now. We need more houses. But specifically, because of inflation, we've priced a bunch of people out of the market. So my wife's in this, in the, the women's only Facebook group, Trishy. She says, almost every day, there's a mom, who's a single mom with a couple of kids saying, I'm looking for a one to two bedroom rental for under a thousand dollars. There are very few of those that a mom with two kids wants to live in. But now, by incentivizing the way we're doing, we're gonna have new construction that has incentivized these external rentals. So these families can live on the property with the, with the owner occupant. So everybody's stuff is gonna be taken care of. And there, it's new stuff, so it's all gonna be higher quality.
Yes.
So we're fixing multiple problems at a time with this. Here's the second thing that I always forget to say. There's an organization downtown, downtown called the BRTA, the Bartlesville Redevelopment Trust Authority. And they have the ability in, uh, in, uh, the Capitol Hill District, so a big chunk of downtown, to actually help people either remodel or build new if the property is blighted. Well, these properties that have been taken over by the, by the city, in my opinion, are all blighted. They, they have some discretion in what they, they do, but number one, there may already be some funding for that. Some of these properties are in opportunity zones, which actually get incentives from the federal government. So there may be money to help develop those. And the BRTA has this great policy that I, that I would attach to this, the Hometown Hero Land Run, which is, a certain percentage of the construction work that is done must be done by local labor.
Love it.
So now, we're using, we're using local people, so we're stimulating the local economy with zero extra tax dollars. So we have moved these vacant properties off the public dole.
Yes.
So that stops costing us money into private ownership. So now we can start collecting, uh, property tax again. So that's now making the community money. We are helping, um, we are giving these properties to people who will develop them, which will increase the value of the entire neighborhood and incentivize more development in that neighborhood. We're helping out our police officers, our firefighters, our teachers, who we all want to help out. So we're giving them an economic boost and helping them build deep roots in the community. So that helps us long-term with a host of things. And at the same time, we're stimulating the local economy. And none of this costs us tax dollars. It actually saves the taxpayer money. I mean, win, 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 win.
This is, I love this. This is why I, I, we get so focused on the national politics, or the national politics. This is why, my, my dad was city manager for fourteen years. I am so huge on local government, because it affects us right now. I mean, what's happening in Washington, okay, maybe eventually, but right now, what my city council does can affect me today.
Yes.
And so, man, I am grateful for these ideas.
So can I, do you, do I have time to explain?
Yeah, yeah, cool.
So there's a, there's an idea, what you just said, I, I've thought about this a ton. In fact, I will be making a video on this, I haven't done it yet. So, again, I'm a first principles thinker, right? Start at the foundation and build from there.
Yes.
What is the most important unit of government in a republic? The most important unit of government in a democratic republic like we have? The most important central key unit of government is the individual. So the way that governance works in a place like America should be, I have to be able to govern myself.
Yes.
So there's a direct correlation between freedom and responsibility. We, we think that because we're Americans, we, we are free. In fact, that is not true. You have rights and shine in the constitution, but in reality, you are only as free as the amount of responsibility you are willing to take on and can handle.
Yes.
So if I'm a person who wants all freedom and no responsibility, then what will end up happening is I'll make all these decisions. And the consequences of those bad decisions will end up enslaving me in the long run. I will be, become a slave to the consequences of my choices. If I'm a person who is, who has all this responsibility and no freedom, that is actually a slave. Somebody else can tell you, you must do all these things, but you don't get to reap any of the benefits, right? That is slavery. So you have slavery on both sides of this balance. In the middle is actually the way that life is supposed to work. That, in as much as I can take on extra responsibility and succeed, that the options that I have in front of me will always grow, so I will have more freedom, right? There is no such thing as absolute freedom or absolute responsibility without the other. And freedom, responsibility kind of limits your freedom in, in tandem. That's the way things work. So the most, the core unit of government in a republic is the individual. I have to figure out how much responsibility I can take on and gain freedom as a result.
Yes.
As I find myself successful, now, the question is, can I be responsible for someone other than myself?
Yes.
Typically, that happens in relationships, in marriage.
Marriage, parenting.
And in healthy marriage, it, that means that I have found, like, you know, for my wife, she is an exceptionally responsible and exceptionally, um, productive, sounds, is a weird word to use, but essentially, she is incredibly capable.
Sure.
Right? So I am capable and she is capable. We can both govern ourselves as individuals. Now we come together and what happens is, we are actually capable of more now together, responsibility and freedom together than we were as individuals. That gives us the right to now have children. That becomes the next layer of government. So like, the philosopher, uh, I think it's, I think it was a Stoic philosopher, Simmica, who essentially said, the nuclear family is the core unit of government. I think he was wrong. There's one layer below that, because if you're not responsible for yourself, you're actually just gonna create chaos in your marriage. You're gonna create chaos in your kids. But if you're responsible, so the individual, too, now we have a family. Can I govern at that most fundamental of levels?
Yes.
And if we are successful in raising healthy kids and showing that, that we can succeed, take care of ourselves, produce an abundance that not only feeds four more mouths in my family, but also then has enough to share with our neighbors and our friends and, and community. Now, now we've shown that we are capable of more responsibility, more freedom, more servant leadership. So when you, once you get this around, you get your head around. So when you, once you get this around, you get your head around this. Number one, there's something to do with that, which is each of us should be taking on the maximum amount of responsibility we can handle. Because we will get the maximum amount of freedom in the, you know, in the exchange. But also, at some point, all government is, is just a collection of individuals and families saying, we can't, we need someone who will do this for us so we can focus on all the things that we are better suited to do on our own, right? To take the responsibility we can, somebody needs to take responsibility for the rights and the opportunities that exist for all of us. That is what the, the government is supposed to do. But once you see the individual is the basis of all of this. The further, I like thinking of as the further up the pyramid, right? The further, the further away from the foundation you go, the higher the level of organization. The least, the less important it is, the less foundational it is. In reality, I mean, Washington does some incredibly important things, obviously. But we've got this myth that like, the president is the most powerful person in the world. President controls nukes, that's a big deal. But as far as like the impact that the president has on your or my life, it's almost nothing. And if there was some kind of horrific natural disaster, it, so with that, that tornado hit Barnesall and hit Bartlesville last year. It was not the federal government that was there in the middle of the night, dealing with the wreckage and the, and trying to help people. It was the neighbors. Right? It was not Uncle Sam dragging my kids into the basement downtown. It was me and my wife. And it was us going out the next morning, like at the crack of dawn, driving through and seeing where are, where, where is their need? And then it was our church, right? Another layer of collective going out and saying, let's, let's start with people and just, let's start cutting trees. And let's start getting limbs off roofs and let's make sure people are okay. When, when things go sideways, it is not the highest level of government that helps. It is the lowest level of government. You go to your neighbor for a cup of, for a cup of sugar. Right? You go to your church family for financial support when you're in need. You go to yourself or to your siblings when you're in this crisis. You go to your spouse when you need, you see what I'm saying? So the low, in, in this framework, I believe the local government has way more important impact on our day-to-day lives than the federal government does. We don't always treat it that way. We treat local politics like they're boring. Local politics are anything but boring. And maybe if boring people are in local politics. But in reality, like, this program is gonna help teachers, firefighters and police officers. More than the president talking about them, right? So, uh, this, this election, the reason I've chosen to plug in here is because, you know, you said, where were you two years ago? Well, two years ago, I wasn't ready to run for city council. There was a reason not to. I could run for some other office. I, I believe that it is time for, for people our age to say, we need to take responsibility. And, and we are willing to do so. We, there's been a bit of a bottleneck. The bottleneck is clearing. It is our chance to step in and say, it is our chance to take responsibility and have the freedom that comes with it. To do so, I, I wanted to step into the place where my skills made the most sense. And my skills fit really well with a thing like the city council, where my ideas and my ability to rally people, to express ideas, to strategize and to get people excited about them, I'm really good at that. And then to be able to tell people like, uh, Mike Bailey, who's, you know, he was the city manager of the year in Oklahoma. He's incredibly capable. He's been, I, from what I can tell, done great things with his whole department, with the whole city, you know, the, the city bureaucracy. To say, hey, you are tasked with making this a reality. And he will implement on a high level. So to bring my skills to bear and then to be able to work with people who are very good at executing will be really, really fun.
Be fantastic. Yeah. Mike's, Mike's a great guy, um, dear friend. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm jazzed about what, what you got proposed here. I'm, I am 100% endorsing and saying, go Aaron. Get it, brother. Would you, thanks for taking time to talk to us.
Yeah, of course.
Would you dismiss this in prayer?
Yeah, I would love to. Father, we're thankful for you. We're thankful for your love. We're thankful for the community that we get to be a part of. God, it is easy to see our neighbors as other than us when they have different opinions, different beliefs, different, uh, value structure, different worldviews. We can, it is easy to see the person that we disagree with as somehow of a different quality. And I am thankful that we are all individually made in your image. Help us to remember to love our neighbors. Help us to remember that while ideas are worth fighting for and fighting over, that people are made to love and support. God, help us to have clarity, um, give all of our leaders clarity from the, from the national level, all the way to Bartlesville. May we always be led by people with wisdom, um, by people who genuinely love and care for the people around them. God, may, may justice and mercy be found in our community. Help us to love in such a way that moves us to action. And may we all be willing to take the responsibility you've created us for as, as people who govern this planet on your behalf. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen. Hey, thank you for your, for your time and this opportunity.